It being 7:12 on Monday, October 7th, 2013, I'm going to call this October Town Meeting to adjourn. Do we have a motion to admit? Mr. Messeria?
Mr. Moderator, I move to move that the following persons be admitted to the meeting. Great Value Coaches Town Administrator Elizabeth Pogge, Finance Director Darren Klein, Town Councilman Robert Toros, transcript, Carol DuCroix, Town Clerk Staff, Kathleen Willis, Superintendent of Schools, Michael Conley, Director of Finance and School Department and Operations for the School Department, Eugene Torek, IT Department, Town Hall, Helen Helena Minton, Library, Allison Olson, Human Resources, Mary Ann McKay, Treasurer Collector, Amy Lukowicz, Youth Services, Michael Murphy, Police Chief, Rob Carbonne, NORCAM with Freedom of the Floor. That also goes for Bob Toros. Jason Smith, NORCAM, Freedom of the Floor, Debbie Carbonne, Assessor, Town Hall, Richard Caravelle, DPW, that's Richard Caravelle. Randy Carlson, Nine Abbott Road, Martin Fair, North Reading Health Agent, Maureen Stevens, Director of Parks and Recreation, Daniel McGinnis, Planning Administrator, Sue Magnner, Veterans, and John Dunn, Seven Little Meadow Way.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? While the visitors are coming into the hall, let me go through a few items. Visitors, town boards, and committees can sit in the center section in the front few rows. Other visitors can sit in the section to my right in the first few rows. The tellers for this evening, our Chuck Karucci will be counting the front in the section to my left, and Ed McGrath will be counting the center section to my left. All Town Meeting participants should be wearing a red ribbon, and visitors should have a black ribbon. Please wait for the moderator to recognize you before speaking. And I would ask that everyone turn their cellphones off, even though you're watching At this time, if we could have the pledge of allegiance from Chairman Delaney.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to Mr. Delaney?
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with reading of the warrant. It refers to the articles by number, and further to dispense with a reading of the return of service by the constable.
We have the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article One, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article One, hear and act on reports of town offices and committees. I move to hear reports of town offices and committees as may be presented at this meeting.
We have several committees who would like to give reports this evening. I'd like to call on Ed McGrath from the Recycling Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Appreciate the opportunity not to call on Chuck Karucci. So this is going to be quick. We've got hot off the presses, and want to give the update of where we are after three months of this fiscal year with the new trash limits. The co-mingle is up 46 percent from last year, 152 tons from 104 tons. Paper is up 28 percent from last year, 198 tons versus 155 tons. Trash is down 7 percent. And we're now, this year, we've out 1,126 tons versus 1,214 tons. The recycling rate for the first three months is 23.7 percent. In FY13, after three months, it was 17.6 percent. So we're, the trend is, we've gotten off to a great start this fiscal year. The final numbers for FY13, the recycling rate was 19.5 percent. We avoided $83,479 in tipping fees. Over the past eight years, we are averaging $88,500 in avoided tip fees, total of $708,000. And to help increase those numbers, there are two changes to the recycling program. Number one, pizza boxes, go in your recycling bin, no questions asked. Whatever you get, whatever's on the cardboard, put it in the paper box. Number two, juice and milk cartons, like this one, go with your plastics. Co-mingle, plastics, glass, and metal. So milk, juice, cream, whatever, they can go, they go in with the plastics. That's something new. That's a change in what's been happening in the industry, and we're able to take advantage of it. Just upcoming events, and a couple of minor things. Number one, very shortly, in the next week or so, we are going to announce dates for the curbside yard waste collection. We have a new contract with JRM. We are getting two in the fall and two in the spring. The two dates for the fall will be announced shortly. Second, thankfully, we have 100 friends on Facebook. We're happy. If you're interested, go to North Reading Recycling on Facebook and friend us. We use that to promote events and make announcements of what's going on. Also, on the table in the lobby, those green recycling stickers, Mr. West, if you hold yours up for the sake of, those are available. If you need any, if you're wondering about getting an extra recycling bin and got an empty trash barrel in your garage, get one of those, it becomes a recycling bin. It's magical. We also have postcards out there. If you have a TV or CRT you need to get rid of, or your neighbor's had it on his front lawn by his driveway for the last couple of months, you can pick one up and drop it off in your mailbox. And if you have questions about paper recycling, there's a handout we made a couple of years ago, but it's still valid, and it lists the different type of paper products we have. And that is the end of my speech. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Now I'd like to call on Chuck Karucci. Mr. Karucci will be giving two reports. One is for the Secondary School Building Committee, and the second is for the Hillview Commission.
Mr. Moderator, leave him up 10 minutes.
For the Secondary School Building Committee. Mr. Karucci has asked for a 10-minute leave of the meeting for purposes of a presentation for the Secondary School Building Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Karucci, you have 10 minutes.
As part of the Secondary Building Committee, it's hard to believe that we've been 14 months into this project, and if you look up on the hill, you can see what's happening. We're on budget, we're on time, and that's a good thing for us. Just to give you a little timeline on a couple of things that are going to happen, you'll see them, they'll all be down the front. One of them is, there's a team room going in down at the turf field, which they'll start digging this week. And then in April, there will be a little confusion down on the entrance of 62, in the entrance to the school. That's when they're going to start the lights down there and widening the road. Also tonight, I know most of you people see the building from the screen. We've put up a few photos of what the back of the building looks like and what part of the interior looks like. With the help of the Town Administrator, who's going to run this one? You have to rip out your silhouette. You got your button? Okay. You see, all right, you see where we are with the front of the building? People have asked, how come we didn't do the left side? And the reason, the reason for that is, they still had to load in some equipment into the building, so rather than destroy the brick in the front of the building, that'll be the last part to be done. If you go up there and look, you can see they've done the rear part of the building, it's already completed, and they're moving around to the left side. Next. That's the back of the building, all right? And as of now, that's completed to the top, all right? That's an older picture. By the way, I would like to thank Jeff Simons, who's our resident photographer for this project, who's done a fine job. And this is the roof. It's going to be a complete white roof, rubber roof up there. We do not like to see anybody up on this new roof that's up there, okay? Which has happened in the last week or so. This is the science room, this is one of the classrooms, all right? These are things you don't see, and you can't see from the outside. But that is going to be a science lab. The little pipes that stick out, those are the gas fittings for that room, for the science rooms. Next. And this is what the interior of the building looks like, the hallways. That's a dress block, a finished block, which they stand out, and that's what the walls are going to look like in the hallways, and also in the bathrooms, which means it could be very hard to destroy them. Next. This is the center of the high school, with the skylight, which drops down the three floors. And that skylight is going in the cover in the next couple of weeks that's on site. This one here is the stairwell. There's a stairwell on each end of the building of the high school, and that's the beginning of the stairwell with the finished block. Next. And this is just to show you some of the infrastructure, the plumbing, and the electrical that's in there, and the HVAC that's in there, and that's in one of the hallways. Next. And this is the gymnasium from the backside in the locker rooms. Locker rooms on the lower half, the gymnasium on the higher half. We have a full gymnasium in there, plus we have an auxiliary gymnasium in the back part of that building. Next. And this is the layout of the gymnasium, the electrical that's going under the floor in the gymnasium. This gymnasium is probably two and a half times the size of the gymnasium we have now. And this is what we call Main Street. This is the center part of the building, where if you're looking down, you're looking towards the back of the parking lot. And this will be completely open. One side is the gymnasium, the other side of that is the cafeteria, and that's looking out to the back of the building. And that's looking into where the, it's hard to visualize, but that's looking into both cafeterias, the middle school and the high school cafeteria. And this is the mechanical room down below, on the bottom level. This is where all the boilers and the air conditioning compressors will be. This is the media center, which in my old days was known as the library. But that's where the media center, and that faces the parking lot at the middle school. The entrance to the high school is just beyond that, where those gentlemen are working, that'll be the entrance, and the library sits to the left-hand side. This part here, that's the top half of the auditorium, and this back part is band room and chorus rooms for both the middle school and the high school. And this is what the auditorium's going to look like, looking down. Stage is out front, and the seating is up at the back here. We have seating for 650, okay? So it's going to be a good-sized auditorium. We're going to sell seats if anybody's interested for the best-looking seats there. All right. This is the, this is the septic system, the system we had to put in. We had to put a treatment plant in, and this is where it's put in. There'll be a building going over that, and everything will be treated there, and then pumped out to the leaching field, as you can see it down in the lower half of the parking lot behind the gymnasium. Next. And this is our final picture. This is from the kids at the middle school. Thank you for, I can't, building our new school. And the kids have put that sign up there for everybody to see. And with that, thank you. Okay. My other duty is, I'm part of the Hillview Commission. In our October 20th, from one to four, we are having an open house at the Hillview Country Club. And there are going to be a lot of things going on. We're having burgers and hot dogs on the house. Anybody who wants to tour the course, the members will take them around in a car, or you can walk around the course that day. And there's going to be a lot of things there for the kids. And even if you don't play golf, there's a lot happening that day. So this is the 2050 anniversary. This is quite the thing for the town, so I hope everybody can attend and come by and see us.
We also have a presentation from the Community Impact Team.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the board of selectmen, Mr. Moderator, committees, and the attendees for giving us just a few minutes to update you about an important group in the town, the Community Impact Team. Our team is composed of community leaders who wish to just make a better life for citizens in North Reading by fostering communication, cooperation among agencies and departments in North Reading. And as you can see on our mission statement here, it reaches all citizens, and it does take a lot of work from our leadership team. The team meets regularly to make sure that there's follow-through on programs and events. And I'd like to take just a moment to recognize the leaders of the team. Selecting Messeria, Chief Murphy, Chief Warnock, Superintendent Willis, Rita Mullin, Mary Preddy, Director of Elder Services, who is with me today. I wanted to share with you just a couple of the highlights that we've reached since the team's inception. One of the most useful projects is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It's identified issues that are specific to North Reading and youth, so we can target our efforts to combat substance use violence or any other quality of life issues. This survey was given to a sample of sixth to 11th grade students this past spring, and the results will be available and are being evaluated by an external analyst this This year, the team also purchased 20 books on the subject of bullying prevention. The books will be divided up by grade level and donated to each of the public schools, as well as the Flint Library. We'd also like the public to be aware that there is an anonymous text-to-tip line that can be used by texting NRPD plus their tip to tip 411. I have to mention, of course, to like us on Facebook. We're at 75 likes, and we hope to hit the 100 mark at the recycling committee.
Part of one of those committees is our Social Service Action Team. We met about a year ago, May, and we created a Community Impact Crisis and Resource Guide. This guide is made up of all different types of social services in the area. It has reference to schools, LGBTQ legal assistance, health insurance, fuel assistance, employee assistance, specific just for North Reading residents. These books are available online, you can get it, or they're available at the senior center. There are also books available to anybody who may want to take home. It's a great resource. These books are also available at everyone's desk in Town Hall and at everyone's desk in the school department. If anybody has information, put us in touch with each other, and it's a wonderful resource guide. We also were able to print out our File of Life. For those of you who don't know what a File of Life is, it's a little gadget like this with the magnet in the back that you can stick on a refrigerator. In it, it's a piece of paper that people can put their information on, their name, their health insurance, their drug reactions, their next of kin, emergency contacts, doctor's numbers. And what happens, when our force responders and our force response know exactly what to do, because we have great force responders in North Reading, they go to someone's home, and they see this on a refrigerator, they automatically grab this information, and they bring it with them if they have to bring them to the hospital, so all the information is attached. A lot of times, people just put doctor's appointments in this card. This card is not specific only to senior citizens. It can help anyone in an emergency. So if you want some of these, or some of the backs of the hog, we also have these available at the senior center. We purchase a lot of them for our Community Impact Team. We had it at the National Light Out, so I want to thank the team for purchasing these. And I really want to say this is really a true community program, because as you can see, we have youth services and elder services together, and whatever mixes in between. So it's been a great program, and I wish the whole town takes advantage of it and if you can get more offering. Amy? And by the way, today's Amy's birthday, so we're celebrating Carol DuCroix.
Without any question, my favorite event from the Community Impact Team was the 2013 National Light Out. We had over 600 people attend with over 20 vendors, which included support groups, senior services, and even a free bike safety check for anybody that rode their bike to the event. We also offered local presenters, including senior and youth self-defense, a pool safety presentation, and dance teams. No question about it, the most commented upon presenter was the state K-9 teams. We had three teams put on about a 15-minute presentation within touching distance of the audience. And I know for sure that people left there with a greater appreciation for these, this law enforcement team. And I have to also give thanks to our volunteers in the Board of Selectmen, Parks and Recreation, North Reading Fire, and police, who got into the dunk tank, set up the stations, or even cooked free barbecue. The event was free for anybody who attended, and we served over 500 hot dogs and burgers that day. This is just a note on our action teams, and I want to invite anybody who's interested in any of these teams to contact us and volunteer within any of the action teams that you see, communications and PR, the K-12 programs, youth services, social services, public safety, or the Business Coalition. So what's coming up for next year? As we've been implementing our plans and gaining momentum, and as we move forward, the state of Massachusetts would like us to make ourselves available to other towns who might be interested in developing a similar team or structure to our Community Impact Team. We're very excited to do this and expect to serve as a mentor to other communities as early as 2014. We'll also be offering the programs such as the Peer Leadership Scholarship, which is an incentive-based youth group. Participants will need to apply to the group, sign a contract of sobriety, and attend regular meetings to make an impact in North Reading. The tools and evaluations that are going to come from the Youth Risk Survey will be available this winter, and we're going to use that to set up our other programming. It's also very important to mention that we cannot thank Senator Tower and Representative Jones enough for their work on helping us secure a $25,000 grant for 2014. Their staff are great to work with, and they really facilitated the whole process from beginning to end for us. And as you can see, we have some big plans, and we greatly appreciate this point.
Are there any other reports to be heard? Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation on the reports?
Board of Selectmen, you need to receive a recommendation.
Okay, we have the motion. All those in favor to accept the reports as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We do have a motion to admit. Also, there was a handout, a yellow sheet, which contains all of the monetary articles. If you don't have one and you raise your hand, the staff will come down and get one to you, so you can get all on one sheet of paper, the monetary articles that'll be taken up tonight. So on the motion to, a motion to admit, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following person be admitted to the meeting, Francine Gonzalez Green, 6 Old Deal Road.
A motion to admit, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Two, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, I would ask, leaving the meeting, I'd put a personal privilege to honor the passing of Mr. John Davis, who, for a lot of the newer people to town, was a fine gentleman over here, used to greet you at the door at the check-in here at Town Meeting, but he spent a number of years here raising his eight children and contributing to the community, Main Street Res zoning Committee, Wheat's Building Committee, Property Reuse Committee, Historical Commission, Middle School Mass Science Tutor, Engineering Assessment of Town Home Buildings, and the door teller at Town Meeting. Mr. Davis passed away a couple of months ago, and I would ask, leaving the meeting just for a moment, to announce his, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Delaney, Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, out of the two prior year bills, I move to transfer from pre-cash the sum of $861 to pay prior year bills specified in Article Two as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen, you need to receive a recommendation.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Discussion. It's required before this vote, as it's a prior year bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Three, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article Three, fund the FY 2013 Stone Ice Deficit. I move to pass all of Article Three as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion to pass over, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, the Board unanimously recommends to pass over, as this, these funds will be paid from the FY 14 budget reserve.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Powell.
Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Four, Mr. Messeria.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from pre-cash the sum of $300,000 to be added to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, established under Article Five of the October 1st, 2007 Annual Town Meeting, as specified in Article Four as printed in the
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Messeria.
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Powell.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Messeria.
Just as a matter of explanation, we set this fund up in Just as a matter of explanation, we set this fund up in 2007 for the purposes of having money to help supplement our debt service each year. So this money is being put in there such that we have additional money to cover debt service in our next fiscal year budget, which we'll be voting on in June of 2014.
Further discussion? This Stabilization Fund requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Five, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $110,000 to be added to the Stabilization Fund as specified in Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the board of selectmen, Mr. Misery.
The board of selectmen unanimously recommends.
The finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. Misery.
The Town Stabilization Fund is there. It's kind of a rainy day fund in case we have some major issues. It also has implications on our debt rating in terms of when we want to borrow money, what kind of interest rates we're going to get. And the goal is to get that amount of money in stabilization to a higher level. So adding $110,000 this year is appropriate, and the board of selectmen unanimously recommend.
Further discussion? This Stabilization requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Six, Mr. Misery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article Six as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Misery.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
For the finance committee, Mr. Coleman.
The finance committee unanimously recommends to pass over. The finance committee would wish to emphasize that the town has other future post-employment benefit liabilities of at least $35 million. As of the present, that number has not yet been precisely ascertained by the town, and therefore, we would advocate delaying putting aside funds to pay for these obligations until June of 2014. By that time, the town should have a detailed estimate, and it would be possible to come up with an updated dollar amount that we need to put aside every year. This will be done through the finance department at the request of the board of selectmen. However, the longer we delay this past next June, the greater the yearly sums in the future we will have to allocate. So it would be prudent to start setting aside money soon, rather than to let this problem fester. If we do not, we face severe consequences in the future that other towns in this country are now facing. And services may have to be severely cut, and taxes may have to be raised. We emphasize that this problem is something we do need to address. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I would like to.
Sir, you need to go to the microphone, and then I need the address for the record, please.
My name, my name is Jim Burgins. I live at 22 Mount Vernon Street. And I am, one of the reasons that I attended this meeting tonight was I'm very interested in the Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust. I always find that the information that we're providing is deficient. The question that I ask is how come we don't provide more information about what kind of liability we encounter because of the so-called Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund? I understand that we have 11 unions in town, and I understand that they are very effective at negotiating good contracts. So my question is, can't we hear more about the liabilities that we're going to be facing in the future on these funds? Why do we have to wait until the meeting in, what is it, 2014 meeting, and not later this year, to find out what those liabilities are going to do? This gentleman had just spoke prior to this from the finance committee. I'm sorry, I didn't really get his thing, because my hearing is effective. But he mentioned that this could mean raising the homeowners' taxes, because they have very few options in terms of procuring money to support these liabilities. Yet nobody that I have heard tonight have said what these liabilities are going to amount to. And I would be very interested in learning what those are, even if it means that you could provide it in the transcript or one of the newspapers, so that we could prepare ourselves for this next week. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Misery.
Just as an explanation, retirement benefits, including health insurance for our retired employees, is paid for currently on an annual base out of the town budget. Under state law, in 2040, the goal is to put money into a fund such that you're not paying for that on an annual basis. In other words, there's enough money held in the retirement pool to cover the expenses of our retirees for any given year. So the state is, over the past several years, I don't remember the exact dates, changed the requirement to get that resolved, I think from 2003 to 2040. And currently, I think there's some bills, and Mr. Jones may want to comment later, related to this. And we wanted to find out just where the state was going on it. We also realize it's a big, big amount of money, and these small amounts that we've put in in the past will never get us to the goal. So between now and June is the plan of the board of selectmen to work on a comprehensive plan of getting, meeting that goal, laying it out in such a way that we can affordably move into the point where we're putting enough money into the fund such that we meet the state requirements in 2040 or whenever they end up for the final year. I hope that answers your question, Mr.
It doesn't tell me how much we're required to get.
Mr. O'Leary.
Right now, there's an ongoing, but it'll be somewhere between $35 and $40 million is what the town and North Reading's liabilities might be. As Mr. Misery said, you know, currently, we're paying a pay-as-you-go basis. As people retire and the benefits are included in our own, we pay through the county assessment as to what our current obligation is for the current year. What we have of them, like most communities in the town of North Reading, like the town of North Reading, most communities in the Commonwealth, as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have not set aside enough reserves to cover that liability, so we're just going to pay as you go. Current employees pay approximately 10% of their pay towards their pension. You know, we pay about 70% of their health insurance benefits, but retirees pay 50% of their health insurance benefits. But what we're paying for right now, under our current county assessment, are those retirees that we're paying it at 5% and 7%. So we're paying a low amount now, but we're going to owe a substantial amount down the road. So what the legislature's doing, they've kicked it down the road a little bit more to give themselves and the municipalities a little bit more breathing room in order to meet it. I mean, there's no doubt that there's going to be town employees going forward, you know, to help pay what they're kicking in is going to help pay the current retirees' benefits. But it's still not the right way to do it. Social Security, we pay in now, employees pay in half, the town hasn't paid in their portion for this book. So the liability's going to be between $35 and $40 million, and we're going to have to come up with a way, somehow, to fund it. So we're looking to do something over the next several months to come up with some sort of comprehensive plan, look through the legislature to get some sort of guidance as to what they're planning on forcing communities to do. And the accountants are forcing us to recognize this liability on our books, which was never required before. So therein lies the hook whereby we have to show it on the books. And so you'll be seeing it shortly. And my guess is that once that report is out, I'm sure the town administrator will be happy to throw it up on the website for everybody's perusal.
Further discussion? We have a motion to pass over. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Seven, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to amend the fiscal year 2014 operating budget. voted under Article 14 of the June 3, 2013 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Raise and appropriate the sum of $80,744 to be added to line 29, pension and benefits, county retirement. Ironic. Two, raise and appropriate the sum of $5,882.78 to be added to line 42, health department salaries, animal control. Three, raise and appropriate the sum of $703.81 to be added to line 54, elder services salaries as specified in Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Mr. O'Leary, was the, a second item for health department salaries, what was your dollar amount there, sir?
$5,482.78.
Okay, thank you. Now you said $882, the first guy.
I haven't had time to see the mumble.
I was paying.
My mother tells me.
I was paying attention. For the board of selectmen's recommendation, Mr. O'Leary.
The board of selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommended unanimously.
Further discussion?
Just by way of explanation, Mr. Chairman, county retirement assessments received in 2014, which was after June Town Meeting, we used an assumption of 5%, and the increase was approximately 8%, which just is a factor of how many people and who retired and what our costs are going to be. Elder services, one van driver retired, and part-time employee for elder services took a position going from part-time to full-time, which required benefits and some more hours. And the animal control, two part-time employees now required to be certified, went from $13.10 an hour ordered at the June Town Meeting to $15.30 an hour, as well as being a benefited employee working 22 hours a week, thereby necessitating the increases.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Eight, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to construct, reconstruct, or make improvements to Town Hall and other municipal buildings, and including all incidental and related costs as specified in Article Eight as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee voted unanimously recommend.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
The specifics of the projects that are going to be undertaken, again, these did not meet the definition of capital plans that you move on over five years, so these are things that we want to pay out of free cash available funds. Town Hall, we're going to replace some of the flooring in Town Hall, primarily in the administrative wing, board of selectmen's office carpeting, which is soil that needs to be replaced. Third meeting house, the senior center, flooring replacement there, excuse me, $15,400 for the Town Hall replacement flooring, $9,500 for senior center. The fire station, replacement of the kitchen flooring, I mean, we have 24/7 operation there, requires some structural upgrading there, $3,500. And then Town Hall requires some replacement of doors and locks and doorknobs for security reasons, updating, $7,000. And in the library, we can replace some of the flooring in the library, the top of the children's section, I believe, upstairs, $14,600 for a total of $50,000.
Seeing all further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article Nine as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board, from the board of selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen recommends. Passing over.
Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee voted to pass over.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
There are sufficient funds in the current operating budget to meet the projects that are on the board for town road maintenance and upkeep at this particular point in time. And what we're looking to do is a June Town Meeting, so this will get us through the fall and winter season and into the spring. And in June, before the current year adds, we'll come back with an appropriation of the sufficient funds to take on other projects. So that'll be at the June Town Meeting.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Ten, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 for survey services related to town road acceptances, as specified in Article Ten, printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the board of selectmen, Mr. Prisco.
Unanimous and recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommend.
Further discussion? Mr. Prisco.
This money is for three roads, Adam Street, Swamp Pond Road, and some areas of Elma Street, these to get surveying done so we can get these roads accepted. It's, you know, three, if you look at the $20,000, it does seem like a tremendous amount of money for three roads, but it's 1.1 miles, and the Swamp Pond area, there's a lot of curves, a lot of, it's no real straight shots to it, so that's why the expense of $20,000.
Further discussion?
Judge Uwe was from Central Park Street. Is this a state mandate? Do we have to do this in order to get those Chapter 90 funds?
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Uwe, if we don't get these roads accepted, then we will not be able to get them into the pool for us to get an increase in our Chapter 90 funds. So yes, the answer to your question is yes, we need to get them accepted.
That wasn't my question. My question is, is it a state mandate that we have this study?
It's a state mandate to have accepted roads to be qualified for the Chapter 90 money. To get the roads accepted, we have to go through this process and have them surveyed.
Have we done that on all roads in the past? Because I've been to CPC meetings where we have not done that, that just went to CPC, CPC approved, and then they were given to the state. If I recall correctly.
I think what you're referring to is the street acceptance, which we'll be dealing with later tonight. Mr. Conrady.
In a town, the process is CPC recommends approval, goes to the Board of Selectmen, all streets, including subdivisions, Board of Selectmen recommendations comes to Town Meeting, so irrespective of what kind of road it is, it's gotta go through CPC and the Board of Selectmen.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 11, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $13,740 to fund North Reading's participation in the North of Boston Regional Shared Housing Project in the interest of promoting and monitoring affordable housing as specified in Article 11, printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Prisco.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee wanted to hear the discussion before we voted our recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Prisco. Oh, I'm sorry. For the Planning Commission, Mr. Hay.
Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Discussion from the Planning Administrator?
So, I just wanted to find a little bit about the program. This is to fund the creation of our Regional Housing Services Office to assist North Reading with maintaining affordable housing units that we already have, and also, thank you, and also in the future to, potentially in future years, plan for new affordable housing. However, the first year would primarily be devoted to making sure that our inventory is correct, accurate, and that we don't lose any of the 9.2 percent of, you know, affordable housing that we currently have. The state statute requires that we have 10 percent, we do not, we're not at that threshold right now.
You go.
Okay. So, the, um, so the estimated cost of this program to North Reading would be $13,740. We would be in a consortium of other communities, potentially including Reading, Saugus, Danvers, Wilmington, and Peavy. All those communities are in a similar position as we are, where we are near the 10 percent threshold, but not quite there. And, you know, it's come to, it's come to the Planning Department's attention recently that a lot of communities have been taking on a more active role in monitoring and compliance because numerous errors have been found in inventories in other communities, and when errors are found, often the community just loses the unit, and a lot of the work has gone into building up the inventory that we have, building new affordable housing. It can be really difficult, and, you know, we wanna do everything that we can to maintain the units that we have. There is currently a model such as this running based in Sudbury with six communities that are affiliated with it, and I have heard feedback from at least one of those communities that they're very, very happy with the services that have been provided to them. So, that's why the CPC is supporting this.
Further discussion, Mr. O'Leary.
As Danielle pointed out, right now, we're in a pretty good position in relation to affordable housing, and meeting the percentage of 10 percent threshold that the state has mandated, we're at 9.3 or 9.6, whatever it is. But what, if you recall, over the past eight to 10 years, a significant amount of time and effort was put in by the Zone Board of Appeals and various subcommittees to evaluate 40B applications. Most of you here are familiar with 40B application. The town is coming for us to take a look at those applications for affordable housing and weigh what's in the best interest of the community and make a determination and either approve it or disapprove. If we disapprove, it gets appealed to the state. Because of the process that we have here in North Reading up to this point, we've actually turned out to be a model for the state as to how to handle them, so we've done a very good job. However, at this particular juncture, you know, we're about a third to a half of the way through the timeline for these affordable units to expire. When someone builds one of these affordable housing developments, 25 percent of the housing units have to be affordable. There's generally a 25-year timeline on those mortgage, on those deeds, as far as a restriction. Once their 25 years are up, they can then potentially sell them at market rates and we lose the affordable units. What got us over the threshold was the project out on Route 62 by Lincoln Properties, which gave us credit for 406 units. There's 406 rental units out there. We got credit for 100 percent of them, only 25 percent are affordable. When those expire, say 25 years, so probably about, probably they're six years now, six or seven years, when those expire, those 25 percent, those 100 units, actually all 400, fall off the books. So, what's critical for us is to maintain an inventory and keep track of what we have and what we're getting credit for. We don't have the staff in place, and we shouldn't necessarily have to hire additional staff to do so. So, MAPC is proposing these regional groupings of communities to do this monitoring for us. So, this is a pilot program that we're looking to invest in at this particular point in time. The good thing is, we can opt out after one year. So, if we're not gonna get the bang for the buck, and it's not gonna give us the information that we need, we can always opt out. I think it's important for us to take this step in ensuring that we're monitoring our affordable units appropriately, that we're planning appropriately for down the road when these things fall off the books and we have to go step back up. And when we added those 400 units, we also picked up an obligation to add 40 more affordable units, 10 percent. So, that's why we're below the 10 percent threshold at this particular time. So, this will give us, hopefully, some sort of information, resources, to look at some long-range planning. We're gonna be here at the infancy stage of this, I would say, let's get in on it now. If it doesn't work out, you don't have to buy in and opt in for the second year. So, I think it's money well spent at this particular point in time, and it's not too soon to be thinking about it. So, I would urge the community to support this particular item at this point in time, and I know the Board of Selectmen this evening unanimously supported this, but also said, you know, once we buy into it, come next October, let's see what we got, contract is signed, and hopefully it gets in place by next April. We'll have six months of a track record to see what we're getting for our investment. So, I would suggest that we buy into the program at this point in time.
Mr. Yoo.
Mr. Moderator, I just wanna make sure that I heard Danielle, is that her name? She said, "How much participation is ready to enter the 50th service point?" Does that mean they are not on line with this agenda yet, or is this a possibility?
By October 18th, the communities have been asked to indicate whether they intend to participate. So far, the one community we know is planning on it would be Reading as the lead in town. We're waiting, we're all waiting to give our final answers, and they need to have four communities to move forward with it. If they don't have commitments for more than, then it could fail.
Mr. Yoo.
Is there a restriction or limitation or minimum of talent that needs to participate?
For needs to participate.
Thank you.
And again, if there are not enough communities to buy in, we don't have to spend the money, but we'll have it appropriated if we deem it necessary. And again, as the contract unfolds and we see more of the details, we'll weigh whether or not it's in our best interest. The timeline is here, we need to make a decision, I would urge you to support it.
Mr. Perkins.
I have a statement of resources there, and we're talking about more housing, and one of the major concerns that I have for our community is water. As you know, this year, we were restricted, our water use was restricted, and I'm not sure that that problem could take care of, and I don't know if anyone would address that issue tonight.
We need to stay on topic, Jermaine, to the issue, but Mr. O'Leary.
But it is, we're not necessarily talking about building more affordable housing projects are proposed. Again, we're somewhat limited as far as what we have in space, but there's, you're absolutely right. The amount of water that's available for us is a critical issue, which the Board is working on for some long-term solutions, not just with the Andover, whether it be MWRA or other resources, but that's part of a long-term, long-range plan. But it does fall in line with, you know, what can we actually support?
For the Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommend.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Article 12, Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Prisco.
It was a 4-1 vote in favor of passing over.
A 4-1 in favor of passing over. For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee voted to not recommend.
Discussion, Mr. Prisco.
The majority of the board felt at this time that needed to be a little more research completed, some more data generation, some more revenue plans put together before we went off in this direction. So, we're at, the reason why we're asking to pass over at this time is to, so we can do our due diligence to vet this idea a little bit further.
The Finance Committee's recommendation was on the article, not on the motion to pass over itself.
All those in favor?
None.
Just to get clarification. The initial recommendation, which was not to recommend, would have been on a motion to move forward. So, Mr. Paul, for the Finance Committee on motion to pass over.
Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Further discussion?
Sir, Bill Gillis, One Town Hall Road, I was just wondering, what is the timetable for getting the vision to from this article?
Mr. Prisco. Mr. Guy Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're working with the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Planning Council, to avail ourselves of their services. I'll present some information to the Board of Selectmen for June Town Meeting. It'll be up to the Board whether that, the project will support at that point. At this stage, we're in a stage of information gathering, thank you.
Follow-up, sir?
Slight follow-up, it's somewhat esoteric, but what is the basic feeling of the group on the possibility for solar design? What's the basic tone as far as moving forward, like, in your information gathering today?
Mr. Prisco. The motion is to pass over, so we don't have a tremendous amount of information to provide tonight, and that's all. I'd like to try to stay to the motion, if that's okay.
That's fine, that's how I put it, so we can't put it in the box. Sir?
Did you talk to the committee? Sorry? Yeah, go ahead.
This is Bob Castle, Loveberry Lane. I think it's wise to pass over this article this time. I've been in the energy business for many years, I'm very familiar with how these kind of transactions work, and although solar power or renewable energies could be for the environment, it can be a very expensive thing if not done correctly. And these things are fraught with risk, from regulatory risks to commodity risks, et cetera. So, I think it's a wise idea to proceed very cautiously with this type of stuff.
They got your name and address. This is what I picked up. Sir?
Matt Martin, Parkland Lane. My question is actually which committee is responsible for the process of this? Like, how do we, who do we reach out to to ask questions as you approach the June? We're gonna pass over tonight, June meeting, between now and June, who's responsible for this?
If I misunderstood, you're just looking to get some questions answered?
Yeah.
You can reach out to the Town Administrator's office right now, and he'll put you in touch with the right people.
Okay. This is a motion to pass over, so it's to kill the article, so let's state it, Jermaine, to the motion, which is to not discuss the article. Mr. Coleman.
I don't think I will. I would warn the people who live in this town that this proposal, in my opinion, is financially dangerous for all of us, because as someone who's actually worked in the research field, it's so powerful, the cost currently from solar power is uneconomic, and the only way that it's actually affordable is to force a local RMD company to buy electricity at a uneconomic rate and massively increase our electricity costs gradually. That's happening in Massachusetts and across the country. Costs of renewable energy, unfortunately, could be wholesale price, could be 10 times more than that. That is a wholesale price of a day natural gas, and natural gas might be 3 or 4 cents, or even 2 and 1/2 cents per kilowatt hour for the wholesale price. Renewable energy could be 25 cents, 30 cents, 40 cents, 50 cents. The second thing is, I personally worked in this field, and we have a great natural environment for wind power, especially of Cape Cod. However, we're too far north to really get much bang for the buck in terms of solar. Maybe, maybe 30, 50 years' time, the technology will be sufficiently advanced to change all that, but currently, it's just a really bad idea, and I always worry that people are very idealistic, but they aren't thinking financially the consequences of what will happen. So, I was one of those people who I just wanted to, I wanted to actually get this article voted on, not pass it over and vote it down, because I just see this as a bad idea. I'm not anti-renewable energy. There is a place for wind. For wind, too far north, solar energy is not advanced enough. I say that as a scientist who's worked.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The vote to recommend passing over was 4-1, I was the one voting not to pass over. Again, I just think the Town Administration is taking the initiative to bring this forward, and it is an initiative, to bring it forward, to study, to see the feasibility of municipal solar generation, in addition to maybe even in competition with private enterprise in the setting of these things in North Reading. So, again, it's just stepping out front of an issue which we may have to confront. That being said, there needs to be more discussion, there needs to be more research done, I hope it isn't dead on the vine, I hope we bring it back, so I would urge... So I would urge everybody to pass over.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to pass over, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article thirteen. Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of eight thousand dollars to purchase automatic exterior refurbillators for municipal buildings as specified out of thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen, you need to recommend?
The Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion, Mr. Foley.
I just want to point out where the four are going. They're going to be two at Town Hall, one at DWD, and one at the library.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article fifteen, Mr. Foley. My tabs got stuck together. Oh, sorry. Article fourteen, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over Article fourteen.
Recommendation for the selectmen, Mr. Foley.
What we vote to recommend pass over?
Sir?
By a three-to-two vote.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee voted to pass over.
Mr. Yor.
Mr. Moderator, can we hear from the board of selectmen the reasons for individual votes? Is that in order?
I didn't hear a question.
The question was, can we hear from the board of selectmen the reasons for passing over or not passing over? It was a three-to-two vote, to give individual selectmen.
If they so desire. Would the board of selectmen, majority and minority opinions, like to speak on this? Oh, okay. Mr. O'Leary.
He certainly deserved an explanation as to, it was a three-to-two vote originally proposed, was, there was concern in relation to a morale problem of our employees, not just at Town Hall, but throughout the entire workforce. And it was recommended that we fund a study to interview, get to the root of the issues, and try and address them. But when it was all said and done, a discussion took place, and majority of the board, a three-to-two vote, decided to pass over, and maybe for varying different reasons. I can only tell you what my reasons were. The appropriation amount is going to be ten thousand dollars. First of all, I think we can spend money, ten thousand dollars, on some other important issues. I don't find this to be as a priority. My particular take on the situation in relation to the morale, what appears to be evident to me is not necessarily evident to my colleagues. I personally believe that most of the morale problem within town government, town employees, it starts with the board, and I think we need to assume that responsibility. I think the way that we treat our Town Administrator, our department heads, as they come before us, is quite visible. And I think we have to be cognizant of how we project ourselves, and I think that permeates down through the organization. Some of my colleagues feel something different. But my reason and rationale for voting to pass this over is, it's quite evident to me where the problem lies, where it starts, and where we need to begin addressing the situation. So I didn't think it was wise to stand before you and ask you to appropriate ten thousand dollars of your tax dollars to address something that I found to be quite evident. I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues to give their reasons why.
Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator. I was in the minority, for number two. Since coming onto the board, I've spent a fair amount of time at Town Hall, spent sufficient amount of time speaking to various employees, both within Town Hall and outside of Town Hall. And to me, there's clearly a morale, there's not an issue concerning work productivity. I think we have some of the best municipal employees that may be throughout the Commonwealth. So that was never an issue. Another was raised at one particular town meeting, where it's been suggested to me that the board feels as though that we don't have productive employees. That could not be farther from the truth. But it's clear to me that there is an issue at Town Hall. Mr. O'Leary may be right, it may be the board of selectmen, but also there may be other issues that are driving morale issue at Town Hall. And I know some members of the board, along with yourself, we get phone calls, phone calls from friends and family members and employees, that there are issues at Town Hall. We, I for one, feel the best way to get to the root of that problem is having a study go in, survey all the employees throughout municipal government, see what the issue's at, and come up with solutions for how to rectify that issue. I don't think Town Hall or anywhere in municipal government, people should wake up in the morning and don't feel like coming to work because there is an issue, whether it's the board imposed upon them, or the supervisor, or the administration. I think we owe that to our municipal employees to get to the root of the problem and find a solution for it. Mr. O'Leary's incorrect. The value for the cost of this survey would be fifty-five hundred dollars. I think it's money very well spent to find the root of the problem, get a solution. Our employees deserve it. That's why I was in the minority, I wanted to decide to be voted on and to be passed over. Thank you.
Sir.
My name is George Giannetti. I'm currently the elected inspector in the town of North Ridge, and I am one of the longer-term employees in the Town Hall. I've lived in this town for sixty years. You speak about a morale problem, I'd like to ask any of the board of selectmen if they took a survey of any of the town employees to find out where this problem was. I have never talked to anyone. Nobody's ever come up to me and asked me, is there a problem with this? And I've lived there just a while. I'm sorry this issue came up. It's in the glow, it's a reflection on what goes on in our town and all workers. I'm glad that you voted to pass over this article, and I would hope that it never comes up. And I'd like to also say, I support the current town administration. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to pass over, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article fifteen. Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over Article fifteen.
The recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen, you need to recommend.
Mr. Zoning, does the Finance Committee recommend the recommendation, or?
Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Community Planning Commission recommends to pass over. Pass over.
Further discussion. Mr. Yor.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Can you have an explanation of why, from the board, they are passing over this article?
Mr. Foley.
Yes, I believe at last week's CPC meeting, there were some questions regarding the, as it was written, and we agreed that we would meet with the ZVA, the CPC, and the board of selectmen to work towards bringing this back at the June town meeting.
Further discussion.
Melanie Galley at sixty-three Bunkelhead Street. I was originally happy to hear that we were passing over this article, but now with the information that we may be in trouble during June, I'd just like to state that as I drive around town, or even walk by certain properties in town, there are properties that appear to me to be quite ugly, and perhaps some of them is because of a greater than four-foot retaining wall. But while that's my own personal opinion, I don't feel that it's the business of Town Hall to tell property owners how to beautify their property. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
There's been a commitment made on the part of the board of selectmen, Planning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals to take a look at this issue. And while I'm sympathetic to the lady's comments, you know, what this is specifically, what the genesis was, was the well-upped and ambitious way. And what we're going to be facing going forward is a lot, lots of North Ridge, which were formerly deemed to be unbuildable or not worth spending the money to build on, unless you go and you build these huge monstrosities where you can engineer any type of a, can engineer anything to make it work. And as we have over there, we have almost a nine-foot wall to make a septic system work. It's the last lot in this whole subdivision to be built, and there's a reason for that. But you know, the economies of scale is such that it's now worth their while to make the investment to do it. As such, some of us believe that there should be some sort of a site plan review process to maintain or to ensure some sort of integrity to the neighborhood without an adverse impact. We're not looking to stop people from building, we're not looking to stop people from investing in their progress. It was pointed out at the Planning Commission meeting by other people that maybe what we've proposed here is a little bit too far-reaching, so that what we'd like to do is just take a few months, take a step back, and collaboratively with the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, come up with another proposal. And I think it's important, extremely important, that we do address the issue, that we do take a look at it, and we do it in conjunction with the board of health, so that there is some sort of site plan review. I mean, we don't have the luxury of other communities that have, you know, sewer system. You know, so what happens is these lots that are vacant now, and maybe deemed buildable with an engineered plan, are going to have some unsightly proposal put forth, which can address the impact of neighbors who invested a lot of money in town in the community. So I think we need to take a look at what the solution's going to be. I don't know, I hope we come up with some sort of a compromise that we can address it, and again, protect people's rights to build, but at the same time, protect the investments that people have already made in their neighborhood.
Mr. Yor.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Two things. First of all, when you're dealing with an issue like this, it's really a property rights issue, and I think that if you have this same discussion in June, I think you're going to get a lot of pushback on property rights, because people basically should have the right to do with their property what they wish. Also, this is an item that really should have been initiated through the CPC, which is under their domain to handle community planning issues. I don't believe that the board of selectmen should have initially generated this conversation. It should be directed, as they have in the past, directly to the CPC. And I would like to think that the CPC will be the ones that take this role and run with it as base. Thank you.
Is this on the motion to pass over?
Reason to pass over.
The reason to pass over, okay. I'll give you that. Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Moderator, I wasn't going to get into any of the walls or anything. I think what I wanted to say was that we're very comfortable with the fact that the board of selectmen and the planning board have got to work together to craft something that addresses these issues in a way that addresses a little more than just walls, but perhaps a final grade agreement. So passing over gives us the opportunity to do something a little more comprehensive together, and I think you'll be happier with that than what we're looking at now. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of passing over, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article sixteen, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article sixteen, men code zoning bylaws, Article seventeen, site plan review, section two hundred dash zero zero appeals. Move to pass over Article sixteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen, unanimous, recommends passing over Article sixteen.
Does the Finance Committee, it's a zoning article, you don't question, do you want to weigh in? Mr. Paul, the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Mr. Hayden, for the Community Planning Commission.
Planning Commission recommends to pass over.
Discussion, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, the board has decided to recommend passing over this article for the following reasons. Site, a little education for most of you who don't know, site plan review is under the purview of the Community Planning Commission. By state statute, any appeal of any party that's agreed by the site plan review process is to go to either the district court or the superior court. While we have a bifurcated process here in North Ridge, by bylaw, a party can choose to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there appears to be a conflict between state law and our own bylaws. The board unanimously believes that, given an agreed party, an opportunity to try to resolve any issues that come out of the site plan review process at the local level is probably the better way to proceed. And the board would hope that we can work something out in conjunction with town councils involved, and we're going to seek an opinion from Attorney General's office to see if we can still somehow keep a local way for an agreed body to review the site plan review process. And that's why we're asking to pass over, depending upon what the Attorney General issues an opinion on, we may be coming back in June town meeting.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article seventeen. Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator. Article seventeen, men code zoning bylaws, Article twenty-two, section two hundred dash one twenty-seven C. I move to amend the code of Town of North Ridge zoning bylaws, Article twenty-two, lot slope requirements, section two hundred dash one twenty-seven C, general provisions to delete the word ration in the last sentence and replace it with ratio in order to correct typographical error and to authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of North Ridge specified out of seventeen of the warrant.
The recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Delaney.
Board unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends fixing typos.
Especially in numbers, right? For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Further discussion. This is a zoning article, so it does require two-thirds of, even though it's only fixing typos. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article eighteen, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Moderator, Article eighteen, men code zoning bylaws, Article twenty-three, wind energy facilities. I move to amend the code of North Ridge zoning bylaws, Article twenty-three, wind energy facilities bylaw. We're making the following changes in order to correct typographical errors. One, section two hundred dash one thirty-one D three N, delete WEFs and replace it with WEFs apostrophe S and replace it with WEFs. Two, section two hundred dash one thirty-one D four C, delete superimpositions apostrophe S and replace it with superimpositions. Three, section two hundred dash one thirty-one D four D, delete one-eighth and replace it with one-eighth. Four, section two hundred dash one thirty-one D five P, delete provide and replace it with providing. Five, section two hundred dash one thirty-two A four, delete WEF apostrophe S and replace it with WEFs. And to authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of North Ridge specified out of eighteen of the warrant.
Recommendation for the selectmen, Mr. Delaney.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Community Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article nineteen, Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Modera, Article nineteen, amend zoning bylaws, Article twenty, Berry Center Residential Smart Growth Ovale District, CGA. I move to amend the code of North Ring zoning bylaws, Article twenty, Berry Center Residential Smart Growth Ovale District, SGA, by making the following non-substantive changes in order to correct typographical errors. One, section two hundred dash one oh three V, in the definition of building area, mid building, replace it with...
Oh. There's a tight one on the tight one.
Did you have a party? So many? I've said nothing all night.
It autocorrected. Building is what's misspelled as B U I L D L I N G.
Yeah, thanks. All right, we'll sit down now, all right? No one can hear you anyhow. Start again. One. Whatever you done. Section two hundred dash one oh three B, in the definition of building area, mid, B U I L D L I N G, replace it with building in the same definition. Replace balcony with balconies. Section, in two, section two hundred dash one oh four A, in the second to last sentence, add a closed bracket immediately following the text, approximately seven tenths of one zero point seven acre, to read approximately seven tenths of one acre, zero point seven acre. Three, section two hundred dash one oh eight E two, replace subsection E below with subsection F below. Four, section two hundred dash one oh eight E fifteen, change the reference to item fifteen above to read subsection E fourteen above. Five, section two hundred dash one oh nine A, in the requirements for minimum open space, change the words driveways and driveways to driveways and drivays. Six, section two hundred dash one eleven B four, delete the word foot candles and replace it with, well, the words foot candles and replace it with foot candles, one word. Seven, section two hundred dash one twelve D two, delete the word account and replace it with accounts. Eight, section two hundred dash one thirteen A, delete the PAA regulations and replace it with... All right, help? Help? What? Oh, double quote, oh, sorry, yeah. Sorry. With the, all right, start again. Eight, section two hundred dash one thirteen A, delete the, open quote, PAA regulations, replace it with the, quote, PAA regulations, close quote. Nine, section two hundred dash one thirteen E and F, delete therefore with an E and replace it with therefore without the E. Number ten, section two hundred dash one fourteen A, delete this section XX dot zero and replace it with this, Article twenty, and to authorize non-substantive changes to the numbering of the bylaw in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of North Ring specified out of Article nineteen of the warrant.
Sean, I thought you were the chairman, so how'd you have to read these?
My fault.
The recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, if you have the energy?
Uh, Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Community Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Further discussion. Sir.
Since we are fixing typos, I just need to make a special clarification on how it's written in our copies. A lot of the cases, we're adding words and making, in these three cases, in what I have here, the period is with the end of the double quotation, so basically, on what we're presented, it makes a multiple sentences, our standard period is always stomach correct. I just want to clarify, the periods that appear in the document here are outside of the quotation, but not part of the, not part of the change.
I'm ashamed to say some are and some aren't. Yeah, they are.
The periods are not part of the proposed changes.
Just for purposes of clarification, the, um, the periods, in some cases, in the motion as it was read, the periods are inside the quotations and sometimes outside the quotations. They're not part of what is changing in the article, like in some of the town councils. So the bigger issue would be to make sure the periods end up in the final book the right way. So it's just a period. Some, some got misplaced by one place, social level word. Men.
Grant the rest of the fifteen, none of them. Haven't you ever heard of proofreading material people have sent you?
Further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of John Bigford Way as specified, I'm sorry, as a public way as specified in Article twenty and printed in the warrant, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of illicit interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
The Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
The CPC, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Mr. Yor.
Mr. Modera, thank you. I probably said point of order or something like that, but we have a lot of street access. Is there any way you could just simply move them as we had in the past, as for street and street residences?
Believe me, I had the same thought. To taking a land, its monetary value requires a two-thirds vote. If we did it in one motion and one thing comes up, we're going back to square one. It's not like the revolve funds that we do at the annual town meeting.
But I do appreciate the effort, Mr. Yor. Mr. Modera?
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, items twenty through twenty-nine are all street occurrences. These streets have all been reviewed, correct, Mr. Connavalli? Um, the purpose of accepting these roads are for every mile that, that we accept or have additional mileage of road, we get more chapter ninety money, which is state funding for roadwork. I believe for every mile, we get additional between thirteen and fifteen thousand dollars in state funds.
This through Article twenty-nine all require two-thirds votes. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-one, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Poplar Terrace as a public way as specified in Article twenty-one and printed in the warrant, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
The recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Community, the Community Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Further discussion. Sir.
Mr. Modera, your speech desires a seven-point, I would say, for... My question to the town is, these are the private ways that were had in existence for many years. Are there any minimum standards that are being met before we take on these roads, such as drainage or water systems?
Mr. Connavalli? The Director of DBW.
Nice to meet you. Yes, town engineers gone through all the roads and make sure they meet that CPC standard for width and things like that. So all the roads have been gone through. Part of the, like the surveying cost earlier, there's as-built, what actually what's there in layout plans. So there's been quite a lot to go with them before we bring them over.
Thank you. Further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-two, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Hayward Avenue as a public way as specified in Article twenty-two and printed in the warrant, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
The recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission unanimously recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-three, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Quimby Road as a public way as specified in Article twenty-three and printed in the warrant, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
The recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-four, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Gage Road as a public way as specified in Article twenty-four and printed in the warrant, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
Recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Board of Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-five, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Cameron Road as a public way as specified in Article twenty-five and printed in the warrant, and to further, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommend.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-six.
Mr. Modera, I move to, I move to accept the layout of Caroline Way as a public way as specified in Article twenty-six and printed in the warrant, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
Recommendation for the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommend.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommend.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-seven, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Lord's Worth Road as a public way as specified in Article twenty-seven and printed in the warrant, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
For the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommend.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-eight, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Volk Street as a public way as specified in Article twenty-eight and printed in the warrant, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
For the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommend.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-nine, Mr. Foley.
Last one. See what the new guy has to go through? Mr. Modera, I move to accept the layout of Magath Road as a public way as specified in Article twenty-nine and printed in the warrant, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee of lesser interest in the land within said way, in any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes.
If you need a new career, you can be one of those speed readers on the radio.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was thinking of an auction, yeah.
Well, that too. For the Selectmen, Mr. Foley.
Selectmen recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Paul.
Finance Committee recommends.
For the CPC, Mr. Hayden.
Planning Commission recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Do I have a motion? Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Modera, motion to adjourn, signed a aye. I move to adjourn this meeting, signed a aye.
We have a motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Further discussion. Thank you very much for coming out.